So I was saying that your presence here gives weight to the importance of school board elections across the region for the success of our children in school. I'm John Reed, I'm a community volunteer board member of the Charleston Forum, and I'll be serving as the moderator tonight for this candidate forum. And the sponsors of this forum are the Lady Women Voters of the Charleston area, the Greater Summerville, Dorchester, Cunningham Chamber of Commerce, and the Summerville General Scene. I'd like to thank them and our hosts for setting this up for us, as well as the district office here for letting us into their facilities. As most of you know, on November 5th, this district, along with many others, is transitioning to a single-member district representation. And that means that while those individuals who are elected to the board will be expected to act obesively on behalf of our children and the district, they will be representing individual districts. So it's very important to know what district you're in, and for those who are uncertain, there's a map just outside the hallway that can tell you a little more about where it's located. Voters in seven districts will choose someone to represent them on the school board. Only in three of those districts are the school board races contested. Voters in one, five, and seven only will vote in a contested race, and these are the candidates who will be with us to see what our people see, unfortunately. The candidate forum is not a debate. It is an opportunity for candidates to share their platform with the community. The sponsors of this event are nonpartisan, and this is a nonpartisan event. This forum is being recorded, it will be uploaded to the Leach website so that interested voters can view it later. Recordings are the property of the sponsors, and information must be obtained before sharing the video that we have announced. Well, in alphabetical order in my district, these are the candidates for the Dorchester II School Board that you'll be hearing from this evening. From District One, Dustin Farnsworth, Eric Unger. From District Five, Cynthia Powell, and Mr. Zingaro, then Zingaro, Zangarino, pardon me, thank you. And District Seven, Patrick Davidson, Tim Lee, thank you for being with us. Candidates tonight will be responding to six or seven questions prepared by me and others which the candidates have not seen. Same question will be posed to all six candidates. They will be responding in alternating alphabetical order by last name, rotating through each district. For example, for the candidate opening statements, it will be Mr. Farnsworth, and then Mr. Unger of District One, and then Mr. Powell, Zingarino, and then so on. It gets a little complicated, we will be not only rotating in reverse order in the alphabet, but we will be moving through the districts in a rotational basis, and the whole purpose of it is so that once the question is read, all of the candidates have a roughly equal amount of time to think about the question before they're actually called on to answer it. Closing statements will be in the reverse order of the opening statements. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to make an opening and closing statement. Candidates will have 90 seconds each to respond to questions. A candidate may take an additional 60 seconds for rebuttal after all of the candidates have responded. A rebuttal is an opposing argument or contradiction to what another candidate has said. If you wish to make a rebuttal, just signal me by raising your hand, and I will vote in the order in which you're seated, so I'll go from left to right. My left to right. A candidate is allowed one rebuttal per candidate. I will take rebuttals in the order I just described. We ask that the candidates use closing statements to summarize the issues they want to discuss and their vision of the position they seek. Heidi Helpus, our timekeeper, Heidi, if you identify yourself, raise your hand. As each candidate is speaking, Heidi will hold up a 30-second remaining sign, a 10-second remaining sign, and then a stop sign when a candidate should stop speaking. I will then, if necessary, intervene and help to liberate you from the paragraph that you're stuck in, gently at first. Can you all hear me there?
No.
Okay, we're back on, I think. So, let's begin with opening statements, and again, each candidate has 60 seconds. Please pass the microphone as you go. Our first opening statement comes from Mr. Farnsworth.
All right, we've passed it a ton. I apologize to the camera person, I might have been stand and deliver and walk and talk kind of person, so. Good evening, John, thank you. Me, the women voters, thank you. Everyone that is here this evening, thank you. You took your time to come out and listen to us as candidates. I will tell you, school board is so foundational. Education of our children, the importance of that cannot be understated. So I just want to say how much I appreciate each and every one of you for being here this evening. Super quick, it's amazing to be in this auditorium. I've seen both of my kids when this was Raleigh's Middle School of the Arts, I've seen them perform on this stage, and to now be back here and be able to serve our community is absolutely amazing. It's all about my why. My why is really, really, really easy. My why is all about our kids. I've got children in our school district. My wife is an educator in our school district. We have a local business here. It's really, really, really important to me. Dorchester District Two, I love Dorchester District Two. I love what I get to do, and again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farnsworth, Mr. Unger.
My name is Eric Unger, I'm Dorchester District Two, District One. And I'm excited to be here, thank you to all our sponsors and our audience. My background, I am a construction consultant. I started my business back on August 26th. I find the most time and cost efficient way to build commercial products and make them onto fruition. That gives me, I think, a unique perspective on the job of tailing and running the school board. I have four kids through the system, two in college, she's still in high school. And the four to get senior questions tonight. My campaign is about the vision to help our kids discover their passions, maybe to strong foundational financial foundation, maybe to eliminate the negative influences. We have to do a lot better in design-based initiatives, giving new classes, and really helping our kids discover what their passions are. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Unger, Ms. Powell.
Great evening. In order to save some extra time, I'm going to echo all the thank yous that they already said. And just saying, I'm Cynthia Powell. I am a product of Summerville High School. I received my B.S. in elementary ed at Payne College in Augusta, Georgia. I received my masters from the Summerville Military College and my certification in school administration. I am on the board and running again for the board because I love teaching. I love students. I love the idea of them knowing when they leave high school, how to function in order to make a better place for them to live, community, and also be able to support themselves and their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell, Mr. Zingarino.
Well, as you heard, my name is Glenn Zingarino. I am running for EDII School Board C5 with Cynthia Powell. I have five core principles that I agree with. First is parental rights. Second is active and excellent. Third is understanding how to budget our money efficiently. Fourth is safety and security. And the fifth would be local control in terms of education. Hopefully tonight I'll get an opportunity to talk to you a little bit more about each of those things and how I feel about them. I have children or grandchildren in this district. They are in another state. But I am alarmed by what I see across the country. And because of that, I don't want to have an opportunity to stay in the office on the school board, and I want parents and teachers to have that opportunity to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zingarino. On to District Seven, Mr. Davidson.
Thanks guys for being here. Patrick Davidson, I'm CPA, I'm a partner in a small firm. And I am a Newington Elementary graduate. I'm also a junior high graduate, I'm an early high school graduate, Summerville graduate. My kids also graduated from Summerville High School, College Charleston, graduate. I've been in the Low Country for the last 42 years since I moved here when my father got transferred here. Co-schooled for 18 years, been part of my youth Bible study church. Have a passion for kids, I've done reading and memory for three years now. And it's super fulfilling. It breaks my heart to see some of the things that kids are going through. There's a lot of dead people here in the Charleston area that is all doing reading and memory. I've heard you guys be saying, not getting policy, but we live for it, but I think I have the ideas for fixing the biggest problem, which is money disparity, so I'll get to that a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
Mr. Lee.
Good evening, I'm Jim Lee, I'm running for the District Seven. See, thank you to all who put this forum together. I'm running because I'm a father of five, a grandfather, a student of six, three of whom are students here in EDII. Everybody up here cares. They wouldn't be up here. I'm running because I want to bring a new, creative style of leadership, stewardship, and governance to the EDII school system. I also want, as part of this campaign, to try and improve what we see here tonight. Everybody says they care. I've been talking to people in the community, everybody cares about education. Look at the attendance here tonight. Do they really care? So part of what I want to do as part of this campaign, and if I'm fortunate to have the votes and to get elected, is to create a movement of an engaged community that's involved in our schools so that our children achieve benefits of a public education. Thank you.
Thank you all. I'm going to keep that mic live and come out this way so that everybody can hear the questions. Just let me know if you're unable to hear. Again, you have 90 seconds each to answer these questions. We are going to begin with District Five. And the first question is, what are your top three goals for the school board if you are elected in November? Mr. Zangarino, and then Ms. Powell.
Thank you. To talk to all of you. First and foremost, I believe that as a school board member, I have to be an advocate for parents and for teachers. I have no problem with and believe that a school board member shouldn't be in the free time that teachers or parents may have all hours in a public or private place, and take notes and listen to what the issues are, not only from parents but also from teachers. I think that is one of the main things that I truly believe in, that you cannot do anything successfully if there's not adequate communication. Secondly, I believe that we cannot indoctrinate children, we must educate children. And in saying that, I believe that we must eliminate programs that parents do not want in schools, period. Parents have the ultimate say, it's their show. And third, I would say probably a combination of, and I hope I have enough time to talk about it later, budgeting and school choice. I believe we should allow school choice, and I will talk about taxes and how that should apply later on, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zingarino, Ms. Powell.
Thank you. My three top priorities, number one, not necessarily in that order, would be to continue with the recruit and retain of top-tiered teachers. That also begins, we have to find equitable funding in order to maintain those teachers. I also would like to see that we work more with bringing the parents on board. We need them. We're not trying to keep them out. We need them, but we need them to come, ready to work with us in order to make sure that their children are being given the best that we can give them. If we don't have the support of the parents, the children will lose out. Because we can teach, but if they don't follow up on what we request of them to do, then, you know, that won't happen. And then we need parents to give us ideas. We had one volunteer with a special ed group, and what she did is phenomenal. In my 30 years in District Two, I have never seen Spade operate as well as they operate now because it is volunteer that came in and gave up her time in order to see them. Something like that, this story throughout the district. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. On to District Seven, we'll begin with Mr. Lee.
I've been running for office before. I'll actually answer the questions asked, okay? I have one top goal, and that is student achievement. I have about 35 secondary goals that all feed that. Our focus should be on student achievement. We have a great school system. But when the arts sticks to us, in mind you are not adequate for our children today. If you look at our outcomes relative to our spending, relative to all the problems that we have, we are not producing children that are prepared to read and write and think and communicate at grade level once they move beyond our schools. So we have to focus on student achievement, first and foremost. That's going to be fed and supported by teacher recruitment and retention. That is a huge problem that we have, and it's not a problem unique to EDII. We have to think big, think and recognize the community in which we have to recruit from when it comes to teachers. Third is we need strategic planning and sustainable funding for our schools. Some of you may not be old enough to remember this, but I remember a day when we used to cheer and say, "Wouldn't it be a great day when we had all the funding we need for education and the military had a whole bake sale?" That's what we have to figure out. We are not, we do not have a sustainable funding plan to deal with the unmanaged growth in this district, and that's something that has to be addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
First of all, I'd like to thank the SCA Summerville Educators Association that endorsed me this week, so I was really excited about that. When I am given the opportunity to represent our school district, I plan to represent every child, every educator, and every parent in the room. But mainly three things that I'd like to talk about right this second are student outcome, as Mr. Lee mentioned. And as a board, our primary role is to manage the superintendent, not to manage educators, but the superintendent to make sure that he is helping facilitate what educators need. In a certain leadership model, we're at the bottom. We're here to ask, what do you need as an educator? How can I provide for you to be the most successful? What can we do better? How can I, you know, give you every possible thing that you need? Moving on to the second item, Indiana, it's a lot about money, unfortunately. Dorchester District Two is the third lowest-funded school district in the entire state. Or a small district. I have a plan to fix it. The problem is, all our kids are down in eastern Dorchester County. Our primary tax rules are in western Dorchester County. They don't match up. I've got a plan in place to do it. I'm already working on it to make it happen because it's very important for our children whether they're on the school board or not. I've seen the 10-second sign, so I won't get to my fair end, but I'll be talking about it more here soon.
Thank you. On to District One, and Mr. Unger, followed by Mr. Farnsworth.
Thank you. My top three goals, number one, you have to have a strong financial cooperation. We need a comprehensive 20-year budget, okay? We can't keep ignoring our facilities. That's very important, and what would we ignore our facilities? We get on referendums, we get on debt, and pass it on to our kids and our grandkids. That cycle of abuse has to stop, and we need to come up with a comprehensive 20-year budget. Second is design-based innovation, which will solve a lot of problems. Teacher retention, disruptive kids in the schools, overcrowding. We need to build new facilities for the future, not just taking the same old design we had 40 years ago, doing anything exactly the same way and building it the same way. There's a lot of new classes we can do, there's a lot of programs we can do. Ashley Rich has a farm, we can expand that, we can do other things to make school interesting. And if you want kids to achieve, there are reasons to go to school and make it interesting, okay? And if three of our teachers could teach and discover their passions and help the kids find those passions, we can do that. Design-based innovation, I've lots of experience in that. Third is obviously outcomes, we have 47% that meet or less than grade level in the element math and in English, okay? Yeah, we have 98% graduation rate, something's off. We've got to do better with that. And it could just be the testing, but we can't do social promotion.
Thank you very much. As I mentioned, if you have a desire to rebut anything that has been said by your colleagues, show a hand, and I'll pass you the microphone. Otherwise, you'll lose question.
Yeah, let's do it.
Thank you, Margaret. Oh! I'd like to rebut, Mr. Powell.
Okay, lovely. Very question, and I'll tell you, so I look at it as continued opportunities. Our continued opportunities are goals, and we will continue and have to continue to work on. Number one is growth, for sure, in our county, in our community. We all feel it, we feel the traffic, we feel the presence of growth, right? So that impacts our school district greatly. That puts a lot more kiddos in our schools, in our classrooms, that puts an additional workload on our teachers. There's a lot of pieces that grow. We have to continue to look at that in a whole manner, right? Feeding into that, and some of the folks are chatting about it, talking about teacher recruitment and retention. Teachers, educators are our lifeline in our school district. Children are number one, and kids are number one. But the teachers and the educators, when that classroom door shuts and that's when that magic happens, they are so important. We have to get the best of the best, we have to have world-class educators in our school district, so we have to continue to find ways. And I'm going to tell you guys, it's not all about money. Money's a big piece of it, it's not all about money. We have to figure out how to take things off their back. We have to find creative solutions to recruit and retain the best teachers we can. Last, I'll talk about safety and security. We have to continue, that is a never-ending challenge, safety and security in our schools because children go to school, they can't learn, they will not, or they won't learn if they don't feel safe and secure. So we have to continue as a board of leadership to find ways to make sure that they're safe and secure. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farnsworth, any additional comments to be made at this point? Yes, ma'am.
I can only do this once?
No, no, just once per question, sorry.
I did hear something, and I may have heard it incorrectly, the sense that we don't want parents involved. We want them involved, but we want them to be involved as they work with us. Just because we're the educators does not mean we know everything. But we have been trained to do what we're doing. And what we need parents to do is come alongside us, finish this. Every child should know the first 100 words, that first sheet of book. For me, they should know that before they even come to school. That's what the parents can do. If you need help doing something like that, contact us at the school, and we will support you in making sure that your children are ready. But to send them, don't give us help. You want you all for the conferences, that's where we have a problem. We want you there. We want you there participating with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Yes, Mr. Zingarino.
I believe it's important for teachers to be involved, absolutely. We need good teachers, and we need to retain them, and we also need to invest in them. But we have to have our parents deeply involved in what we do in the school district because they are the primary decision makers. I'm not saying that they're going to choose the curriculum or teach the curriculum, but they should certainly know what it is and have an input into whether they like that curriculum, if they want changes in it, if they want things removed from it, et cetera. That's something I believe in very strongly. You know, I've heard quite often that the professionals know best. Great teachers do know a lot, they really do, and we need to invest in them. But during COVID, we said that medical professionals knew best, and we found that afterwards that not all of them were correct. So it's good to be humble once in a while, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to question two. And for this question, we'll begin with District Seven and Mr. Davidson, followed by Mr. Lee, and the question is as follows. "School safety is of concern to parents, teachers, and students. How can the school board enhance safety in the district's schools?" 60 seconds.
Yes, EDII's done a pretty good job overall, compared to a lot of schools across the country, but it's always room for improvement. Now we have one dog, a second dog, that has to go to a lot of different schools. There are some federal programs for dogs that work in military environments that they possibly could have grants for. We have to stretch out all we can, look for that. One of our problems now with having a scam going through one door is kids open up other doors and let people in different places. Oftentimes, that has been a problem at schools that have had terrible episodes. And for me, there needs to be a line on everywhere. And we've got a lot of good jobs about creating, if you look at whatever referendum's going to do, it's going to improve a lot of safety issues in different places at a lot of our major schools going forward. I would also like to have some mobile scams where kids may not know that you're going to have somebody with a wand. Right now, I would like to see our SRO officers guarantee that if there are shots fired, or if there's a child arrest, that they will run as fast as they can go to the scene of the crime. I've witnessed things on TV where this has not been the case before. And I don't want to hear about backup, I don't want to hear about anything else. That person, if they should not be at that school, if they're not prepared to jump it. I have a lot of other ideas, but 10 seconds, I'm not going to do it, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson, Mr. Lee.
The next question will be to solve the world 190 seconds. So the question is, what can the board do about safety? Well, first and foremost, we have to listen to the safety professionals. To my knowledge, none of us up here are carpentry, law enforcement officers and whatnot. So the board needs to support what those who are accountable within the district who work for superintendent have the resources they need. But I'd like to talk about this from a different lens. This is an indication of where we are as a culture and a community. And what we have to do is use, if you will, the bully pulpit of the school board. Again, getting parents involved, working with our teachers, working with the school resource officers to figure out what can we do to provide awareness and get the community involved in this problem. Because what's happening is the schools are on the receiving end of problems that we have as a culture. And that's why it's important that we build community around this issue and so many of them, some of the other issues when we think about our schools. And the public schools exist for one reason, really, and that is to educate children, to prepare them with the basic skills that they need to move on to live productive lives and do so however they so choose based on their values, gifts, and abilities and their choices. Whether that's college, military, trade schools, or no school, they still need those same basic skills. But this becomes a community challenge that we need to focus on, and the board can lead in that regard.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. We'll move to District One, Mr. Farnsworth, and then Mr. Unger.
Yeah, great question. Safety and security, you heard me talk about earlier. That's how important it is as a continued goal of the board. And I will tell you, I am very, very, very proud of what our board has been able to do just the last several years. You look at some things, so for those who don't know, Chester is our weapons detection dog. So he is specifically in schools, they are looking for weapons. He also acts as an emotional support animal, super cool. We're actually one of the, if not the, first school district in the nation to be able to partner with our foundation in order to fund and bring Chester into our school district. Amazing opportunity. You look at things like the open gate metal detectors. You know, the random searches that are happening, it's not only they happen in mornings, but also throughout the days, they're happening randomly right now. And our kids are really not looking on our shoulders. I ask for a lot, I say, you know, is this really impacting you? What does this mean to you? It really has very little impact to their daily lives other than they know that they are safer and more secure. And I go back to the fact that they have to be safe and secure in order to learn, right? And we're doing that. Our rates of weapons inside of our facilities... Our rates of weapons inside of our facilities has basically dropped zero. What we are finding on the opposite side now, babes, we are finding massive, massive, massive amounts of babes in our schools. So we're going to take those out. That's another great side benefit. So a lot of the safety and security stuff happening in our district, we will continue to look at those aspects every single day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farnsworth.
I guess I'm a little more focused on outside threats. Those are all well and good for inside threats and those, I don't think have been a really huge problem. Outside threats, okay, somebody coming outside, coming into school, shooting up, whatever, that's what's been happening around the country. Okay, so we can, number one, design a, actually touched on it, design-based innovation, how we design the schools, how we renovate the schools, we take security into that design and implement it into the design. There's so much more that can be done under the design-based method. And of course, we consult with our security professionals. I think also there's lessons learned. We take every tragic event that's happened across the country, we break it down, we analyze what has happened, put those events in where they fail. We take those cues and we develop programs for what has actually happened in the real world. I think there's room for opportunity there. I think there's room for expanding our resource, dual resource officers, having in the classroom as well teaching as well as serving as a last line of defense in case we do have an outside threat. Thank you.
Thank you. For District Five, Ms. Powell, and then Mr. Zingarino.
When I first ran for the board back in 2022, one, I had four items I wanted to concentrate on, and one was parental involvement. That is still one of my major goals that I want. I went to a meeting this morning and I was shocked. I was appalled. I was upset. I was angry at our local and state national politicians because of the different types of vaping that the children are able to acquire illegally and they have been marketed so that it looks like it's a writing pen, so that it looks like a key fob. Some of these kids have no idea what they're taking and what they are sniffing on. They don't know about the combination of how, whatever the item is, how it has been mixed, whether or not they have other foreign substances in there. And so I need parents to be informed as to what their children are getting when they go just into some of the grocery stores. They're right there. I want you to go to a place like the gas station and look and see if you don't see some of the things our kids are not able to get supposedly eighteen, but not necessary. So I want parents to be aware. They are our first defense when it comes to the children. Dummy bears. Those aren't regular dummy bears. They're sitting there being high. So that's what I want. I want the parent to be involved. I have knocked the board, you've knocked anti-parent. We need you. We can't do it all. And that's one of the things you can help us with and save your children at the same time.
Thank you so much. Mr. Zingarino.
Thank you. Yes, I'm glad to hear that parents should be involved. Our schools should be safe. We need strict discipline policies in our school, but we also need to do something that I have not heard here, embrace mental health programs. We need to talk about the issues that are affecting our children because there's so many opportunities out there, so many choices to make, but our children are not good decision makers. And if you're not a good decision maker, you wind up in all the trouble. And certainly, I still have an adult as well, but we're talking about our children. That's what we need to be doing. We need to be focusing on that. And we need to make parents and teachers together advocates for innovation in the classroom. Let's change things around. Let's make things more exciting in the classroom. Let's make the children more engaged. That's what we need. I have seen across this country, and it's unfortunate, and it's true here in South Carolina as well, that boards are made up mostly of people from one specific industry. And there's no other industries or diverse amount of industries that are, that people come from that are a board. Those people tend to be people that think outside the box. I came from the business world. I also came from military where I was trained in active shooting. And active shooting is a big issue that we need to be talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Zingarino. Any comments for both of us? We'll go left to right. Mr. Farnsworth.
Yeah, I just want to touch on a couple. And it was amazing. If you guys have not, if folks have not been into a school and seen the engagement and the excitement that our children have every single day in those classrooms, it's unbelievable. If you don't walk out of that school just smiling ear to ear from their excitement, you're doing wrong. And I say that because the balance, right, with our safety and security, the balance is we have to create educational environments and we have to be very, very careful that we're not creating prisons. And I hate to even say that, but as leaders, we have to make sure we're always looking at that balance. How do we make sure we're providing an amazing educational opportunity while at the same time providing a safe and secure environment for our children?
You may, Mr. Zingarino.
Thank you. I appreciate the gentleman's comments. Leadership is one thing and one thing of influence. Nothing more, nothing less. That is what leadership is. And we need to lead our parents and our educators. And what we need to do is come together to be advocates, to talk to the legislators because obviously our schools are controlled by legislation in South Carolina and obviously in the other states. We need to come together as advocates. If we give parents a reason and teachers a reason to advocate for something, you see this room filled today. I'm the president of my board, in my interior. We used to have meetings where there were just a couple of people. Now we have full-packed houses. Leadership. You need to give people something to work on and not make schools looking more than big babysitting service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes.
He said, with the Zingarinos, he said that we need to bring groups together in order to request from our legislators what we want. I agree with that, but let me explain. We were in DC about a year ago. We met with Senator Graham, Lindsey Graham. And we were talking about the needs and all that we had. He said, that's fine, that you are here as a board member. He said, but we need to hear from the parents. You as a group of parents advocating the children, we will join you. But we need you because he heard us, and he said, we need to hear from you because you are the one that voted him in. Thank you.
Thank you all. This is the third question. I was going to say, oh, I apologize, I'm going to rebut.
Yeah, this is a rebuttal anyway, but one thing I think is important for everyone here, we used to stop it up, which basically means a kid has an app on his phone and can quickly signal that there is someone on the outside of the school trying to come in, something going on that needs to be reported immediately. When you have a thousand kids, the more eyes and ears you have, the quicker you're going to find something. Well, then we're taking phones out of classrooms. So I think we need to get the stop app put on all our computers as soon as possible so that that can still utilize going forward. And security, like everything else in education, needs to have our goals and guardrails for our superintendents. So we need to set goals, have certain improvements in certain schools, have a schedule set up for when we expect it to be done by, and make sure we follow up. And every single need we have should be dedicated at least fifty percent to student outcome.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. That it for the candidates? Thank you. This third question will go first to District One and Mr. Unger, followed by Mr. Farnsworth. And this is the question. Population growth and overcrowding are major issues affecting Dorchester Two schools. In May, voters approved a referendum to build new schools and improve existing facilities. First, did you support the referendum? And second, why or why not?
This is a lucky thing. No, I did not vote for the referendum. Why? Because of the way they wound up doing it. They did it in early election, maybe nobody was up to vote. I don't believe in that. I think it should have been under the general election. Regarding the money, yes, we probably did need it, okay? But it's a failure, okay? We should never have gotten to the point where we had needed a bond referendum. It's due to a lack of poor financial planning for the past twenty-three years. Okay, I'm all for how I'm going to get money. Okay, one, what, two weeks ago, D D four was presented with a sixteen million dollar check from the South Carolina Department of Education by size. That translates to D D two, one hundred eighty-five million dollars, okay? That's about the size of the bond referendum. They just asked for it. Okay, so, by the way, you can raise money. We have local, we have federal, we have state. We need to notify, I like what the D D two educational foundation is doing. I want to expand that. There's a lot, look at James Island, that festival, they raised about a million dollars a year. Why can't we do a festival? Why can't we do festivals like that? Why can't we have a fourth source of income? And lastly, the council is studying right now, impact the use of D D two and D D four. That may prove, as long as there's no loopholes, that may prove another source of funding. Thank you.
Farnsworth.
Yes, one hundred percent. With seventy percent of the voting population that approved our referendum, I was not only excited to support our referendum, that referendum was beyond needed in Dorchester District Two. It's not a matter of foreclaiming. I want to reiterate the fact that Dorchester District Two, if you did not know this, Dorchester District Two is in the bottom ten of school districts in the state of South Carolina. The bottom ten in funding for the state of South Carolina. Yeah, we're in the top twenty for our performance. I think that says a lot. That said, that referendum, I talked about growth earlier. When we look at what continues to come in our schools, or I look at places like Sam Hill, I look at places like Beach Hill, they are bursting at the seams. Those teachers have more kids than they should have in their classroom, right? That's not, that's not fair. That's not, that's not a good, that's not a great, that's not a world-class education that we should be providing to our students. It's not a world-class facility that continued growth, continues to put a strain on our school district. That bond referendum was crucial. And we're able to deal with no mileage increase. We're able to deal with refunding of debt. So it didn't put any debt, any future debt on anybody. How amazing is that? And I'm not trying to brag, but I can tell you the board member that just happened to be in the room that said, hey, we really need to do this bond referendum. Yes, one hundred percent. Anybody who says no should not be on that school board.
Thank you, sir. We're going to go to District Five next, and Mr. Zingarino will hold that as well.
Let's talk about bonds. When you issue bonds, you cannot pay for them. It's an obligation of the community to let the taxes to pay for. So I did not vote for the referendum. I'm very proud to say that. I'm also very proud to say that we have a lot of money that is being dismanaged and can be used more efficiently. We have a superintendent in this school district. There is two hundred thousand dollars a year and one thousand dollars a month in a car allowance. Yeah, and I spoke to the teachers who have to reach into their pockets just to pay for pencils, papers, notebooks, the basics. One thousand dollars a month, that's twelve thousand dollars. Now, if you enter into private public partnerships and get discounts on those items, let's say, they'll triple. That's thirty-six thousand dollars a year worth of supplies that we could provide to our schools, just by taking away the car allowance, not owing by the salary. I think we all would like to earn two hundred thousand dollars a year. Quite frankly, I don't think any superintendent or administrator is worth that. Just like I don't think any sports figure is worth that. But in this case, we're talking about children and two hundred thousand dollars a year and one thousand dollar a month allowance for a car is absurd.
Thank you, Mr. Zingarino. Ms. Powell.
I must say, yes, I support it very enthusiastically, the idea of us spending money in order to put our children in a better position to learn. Crammed in a classroom in a trailer is not conducive to you getting the best that you can get. Too many children in a classroom creates problems. You cannot get to every child that's in there and adequately monitor what they're doing, have they actually done the problem correctly? Because there are too many. I've sat in rooms where I could even move between the tables. So the fact that we spent the money on a bond referendum and we voted for the, yes, I voted for the early referendum because we found out, first of all, the cost was definitely going up. If you build anything like you seeing, prices keep rising. And not only that, we figured if people are truly interested, you're parents, we want you involved, that's a good opportunity to show that you wanted your children to have the best. And so what do you do? You go out and you vote, even if it's an early vote. And so we applaud those that voted with us and we believe that we're going to see the benefits of that. Thank you.
Not just yet. We're on to District Seven, Mr. Lee will go first, and then Mr. Davidson.
What can you find out about me? Extremely candid. Every single thing that that bond referendum was supposed to cover was a true and legitimate need. I, however, am sick and tired of kicking the can down the road. The need for that bond referendum, the need for those buildings and all the things that are covered, didn't magically appear back in November of last year. We should have seen this five years ago and had been thinking about what we were going to do to fund our schools. No, I did not vote for the referendum because of the way it was done. Seventy percent of the minority of people who came out supported that. It should have been done during a regular election cycle. And quite frankly, it should have been brought up a long time ago. This is the problem we have with the lack of strategic planning and vision, the stewardship that we need, and the sustainable funding that's required for our schools. There are a lot of different sources of funding. Quite frankly, the way we fund our schools is a name, but that follows suit because the way we tax in South Carolina is a name. We need to engage the county council. They're the ones that approves any taxes. We have to engage our legislative delegations. I sat down and had a conversation with Senator Bennett before I contemplated running for this, to talk about what we were going to do for funding. The legislature continues to kick that down the road.
Thank you, sir. Now, an opportunity to rebut.
Thanks, I love to talk.
I wanted to get one more. I apologize.
I voted for a bond referendum. I was actually part of a group that was pushing to do it. I think as a leader, you don't look backwards and talk about what someone should have done in the past. I feel a general doesn't talk about what a general did before, or he doesn't move forward and finds ways to fix things. A superintendent does the same. So, you know, I see the problems we face. It's a good problem to have, honestly. People like coming here because it's a good place to live. When I moved here, D D two was known as the best school district in the state. I think we have that. I don't think it's anyone person's problem. Growth is a lot. So I think I, as a C P, I have financial solutions to actually fix our shortfalls. We have with our teachers compared to Hurley County and Charleston County, and that's really what we need to fix most of our problems. The bond referendum is ready for building facilities, other ways to fund teacher pay increases and retention. Thank you.
Everybody from left to right, Mr. Farnsworth. I'm sorry, Mr. Unger.
I don't think four hundred million dollars in deferred benefits is a good problem to have. I don't think it should have ever happened. Okay? And, yeah, we're not talking about, the reason we're talking about that, going back, looking back is because this is an election for who wants to go forward. Okay? So all this happened under, Justin Farnsworth has been on, on the board for ten years. Okay? Why do you want to continue that lack of financial leadership? I'm not saying he did it, but he's part of the board. Okay? So I, I propose that we, that's why I want to have a comprehensive budget to include maintenance, to include capital reserve for new facilities. And you know, a real man pays his debts and doesn't pass it down for the next thirty years. Okay, and I want to come up with that budget and I want to ask councils for it. I want councils to approve it, unless there's a reason not to, but there won't be. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna own that. Uh, you want the guys who put the two hundred million dollar bond referendum on the ballot? You're looking at it. I was in the room when we talked to our financial advisor, talking about, hey, this is an opportunity to move forward and a creative solution that does not put village on the back of taxpayers. I mean, no village increase. There's no village. We paid no more village. Taxpayers paid no more. We re-biased that. It's crazy. Everyone, I don't know where these stories come from. We did not do anything else. There's no extra debt on anybody. We didn't, we no extra village, right? It's, it was unheard of. It's super great. And we did it because we've been responsible with our finances in Dorchester District. That's why we were able to do that off the bond referendum. That's why seventy percent of the voters that came out supported, they still support it. We need facilities and we need them now. We're moving forward with it. It was a good thing. Don't let anybody tell you it's not.
How's that one going?
Yes, go ahead.
Heard a couple of good things here, a couple about leadership. That's what I heard here. We have to move forward, not look backwards. Lincoln once said that, uh, man, a leader with no followers is a man taking a walk. And I believe in that. Let me talk to you a little bit about what was just spoken. You know, I've got two ideas to get. One is Lisa, which I agree with, which is kicking the can down the road. And what I heard him from a somber about impact fees. Do not count on the county council and town councils to levy impact fees or sufficient impact fees. That's why you see all the growth in this community, but no infrastructure being addressed. Their donors are also the villagers. So you're not going to get anything from them that's sufficient. Okay? I believe that we need to examine how money is being spent. My career, you know, served in the military, was finance and economics. And I can tell you, when you say, there's no village, there's nothing, don't worry about it. Worry about it five years from now when you see taxes that are drawn from other sources, if you have to pay.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we're having a little bit of answer creep. So we tried to rein it in a bit, pay close attention to Heidi, she'll help to do that.
Sorry, Heidi.
Ms. Powell.
You have the right to discuss. Anyway, I just want to say this. For those of you that are saying we are not planning ahead. You see that gold sheet up here? That's been up here for a while. So that tells me some of the people that are speaking have not been to our board meetings. We have planned out what we want to happen. We don't just do it just to do it. And we check off whenever something has been accomplished. So there is a plan. We've already found it to talk about moving toward year twenty thirty and how many students we'll have and what we need to do to accommodate them. You may not hear everything, but if you come to the board meeting, you will get a lot. And maybe working together, we'll get a lot more done. It's okay for you to run for the board, but I just want you to make sure that you not just run, but you participate before you get on the board and whatever you can do. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Davidson, Mr. Lee.
Yeah, just one quick item. Um, when you're talking about moving forward, it doesn't mean you forget history and facts. It just doesn't mean you don't point fingers. That's not the way to fix things. If I was elected on the board, I would have to work with some of these people and others. Uh, if you don't treat them in a businesslike manner, the way I work in a professional environment, you're not going to get things done. And I think, uh, it's always been my way to do that. Maybe looking at a price like manner, and I think it's important for, it's not about adults arguing over things. It's about getting stuff done for children.
I was at those board meetings. I have one opinion. I used to be on, I was a elected school board member previously. I understand how they work. I observed everything that took place in there, and that's how I formed my opinion. I would just simply ask Justin, I don't want to point you out, but so this referendum you just passed is two hundred million dollars. It's a thirty-year bond. How are we going to pay for everything else that we know we already need? We're gonna have to go back for another bond. And we're gonna have to be transparent. And we're gonna have to explain to the community that the next time we come, it's not going to be for a two hundred million dollar bond referendum. I lived through a billion-dollar bond referendum up in the upstate. And you know what? When they finished the program, it was a fast build, three- to four-year program, every single building they opened was at capacity. Why? Because of the people doing the planning. The people not paying attention to the things that matter. These things are great visuals. Okay? Talk to somebody that's actually done long-term planning.
Thank you, sir. We will move on to question four. And for this set of answers, we'll begin with District five and Ms. Powell first. The question, the teacher shortage has been a chronic problem across the country and recent increases in teacher pay have helped to alleviate it. Would you advocate for further increases in pay? And would you support pay increases based on merit?
Oh, pardon me, I would vote for teacher pay increase to happen yearly. Would I do it on merit? There's a lot that goes in paying teachers based on merit. Because certain children are played in certain classes that makes it very difficult for you maybe to achieve certain goals that you may set. So if you're doing it strictly on merit, merit can have a part to play, but it shouldn't be the only need by which you give those increases. Because it depends on who you have been given to work with. The other thing, who was the other part of that? The other thing?
More pay increases and would you support?
Yes, we are not at forty-seven thousand. Our neighbors are automatically getting fifty-two and then Ceaseford will get five thousand more, five thousand next semester. We don't have that money. The people that are with us now, they are here because they want to be. I visited a class the other day, and this teacher told me, he brings home twenty-three hundred a month. His rent is eighteen. What are we supposed to do with that? Should I not advocate for him to get more money? Yes. So evidently, I will be asking for more money. Thank you.
Mr. Zingarino.
Yes, I will read you to invest in good teachers. And I think we need to invest in training those that are not good to become good teachers. In any industry that you're in, you have great people and you have people that are not exactly doing the job and they need a little bit more training and development. So yes, I would absolutely say we need to invest in. Should it be on meritocracy? Absolutely. Everything in this country is based on or should have been based on. It wasn't the past. It isn't now, based on meritocracy. I don't believe in, in participation trophies and things like that. I simply don't. I'm not that type of person. I believe that you earn what you get. D E I doesn't work. D E I stands for didn't earn. And I cannot see that introduced into our school systems. What can I see CRT, the sixteen-nineteen project, or any other forms of revisionist history in our schools? That's what's hurting our children. We talked before about children. Let's talk about that. We're hurting our children by indoctrinating them, not educating them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, for District seven, Mr. Davidson, you'll be first, and then Mr. Lee.
Um, I absolutely have to pay our teachers more. If they're running a construction company and the company, uh, three miles down the road was paying their employees that does this, that exactly, you know, five thousand more a year, you know, how hard is it going to be to reshape the company? And that's what we're facing today. You look around here, it's underdeveloped. You say, how can we be such a poor school district? Well, if you go back to what I said earlier, the solution to this problem to get us on par with Berkeley and Charleston County is not as far-fetched as you might think. It's really an easy solution. Go look. I've gone all the way out from the C P A. Look at the taxes, uh, the fees and low taxes for Western Dorchester County compared to what they are in Eastern Dorchester County. Match up what the tax rules are, where the people are, spread it out equally and fairly, and you're going to see a problem exist. Merit is absolutely important, but as mentioned before, if you're given a classroom full of people that have not performed in the prior year, you have to take that into account when you're judging them. As a school board member, it's not our job to micromanage the school districts. It's not our job to micromanage teachers. Uh, we provide for the school district. We provide for the superintendent. It is his job to make sure we use those assets the best they can. But we have to give them solutions with our, um, legislative lobby that is already in place, happening, and I've done this for years, so I appreciate this work.
Mr. Lee.
So really, a super odd question. Do you support paying teachers more? And then secondly, how do you pay for it? It's an emotional issue for some, and I think it's the responsibility of the board to take a cold, sober, practical look at it. The reality is, is we have X number of students that have to be educated. That means we have to have X number of teachers at various levels. We don't currently have a system of evaluating teachers that supports rewarding on merit. I'd be in favor of exploring that, seeing that's something that could help. But the current situation is very simple. The market is driving salaries for teachers in this area. That's not the only reason we have a teacher retention and recruitment problem. It's part of it, but it's not the whole thing. So the question, do I support paying teachers more? I believe the evidence is very clear. We are not competitive in the market that we have to compete with teachers. Would I support paying teachers, uh, based on merit and performance? Not currently, because we don't have a system in place that you can effectively do that. But we could sit down, other districts around the country, and move to a more merit-based type of, uh, performance management approach for teachers, and we should explore that. But we do have to realize, we're not a factory floor. We're not turning out widgets. We're dealing with children. And children are a rather dynamic commodity with which we have to work to educate.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Powell will be next. Uh, when we're done.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Yeah, for sure. Um, yes, sir, we, we have to pay our teachers more. Um, and further than that, what it really speaks to is we have to treat them as professionals, right? They go to school, they get their degrees, they have master's degrees, they have doctorate degrees. We, we have to not only pay them like professionals, we have to treat them like professionals. We have to figure out what is being put on their backs. We have to figure out the red tape that is in their way to be a professional. We expect that. I told you earlier, the magic happens when that teacher closes that door or they're in their classroom, that's when the magic happens. It's an unbelievable thing. See a child over here to here with that teacher in a classroom? There's nothing more precious in this world than that. It's amazing. So I hope everybody understands that we have to treat them like professionals. As far as the meritocracy, merit-based programs, um, I would actually say the same thing that Mr. Lee said. I, I don't know that we have a true evaluation system to be able to put that in place today where that would be a system that actually generates results. Because if we're going to put in that type of system, the only reason we would do that is to generate results. I will tell you, if you look at the research around the country, there are districts that have gone to a merit-based system. The research is showing us that their performance, their test scores, their graduation rates, uh, believe it or not, it's actually not any higher. In some cases, a lot lower, um, the districts that they don't have that. So I'm just saying we need to evaluate it before we go down any of those roads.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ungar.
The budget should be flat, that is, with the community. So the community wants to pay teachers more, which they make about fifty, I'm sure, two thousand dollars a year. I think that should be included in the comprehensive budget. Right? No problem with that. Okay? I think everyone deserves to make as much as they possibly can, and I do believe in merit. I think we can develop metrics to evaluate teachers on merits, and I think it can run through the whole spectrum. Okay? Um, and bonus bonuses for, for, is based on that. Okay, we can certainly offer pay bonuses for, for those who exceed, uh, the threshold as far as merit goes. Okay, but first, we have to have a comprehensive budget. We have to let the community know what that budget is, and it will reflect our values. Certainly, we want to pay teachers as much as they deserve. But right now, eighty-seven percent of our budget goes to administration and staff and teaching and everybody above. That doesn't mean much for the kids. The kids are what it's all about. We have to have innovative programs, we have to do all kinds of things to encourage kids for what they want to do, uh, when they get out. So I support all of that, and I think teachers should, should make a great wage, and even make some really good ones once you do that. Thank you.
Sir, I sent some enthusiasm for the budget.
Thank you. I, I, eighty-eight, the number's eighty-eight percent. Eighty-eight percent of our budget goes directly to instruction. If you look at our pie chart, eighty-eight percent of our nearly three hundred million dollar budget goes directly to instruction, classroom instruction. The vast majority of that, we hire about four thousand folks in Dorchester District two. The vast, just like I mean it is, I run a business, the vast majority of my business is my staffing. It's the exact same thing. So when I say direct instructional purpose, eighty-eight percent, that's our staff, that's our teachers. That's what we're doing, what we're supposed to be doing. We're mirroring what the community wants us to do. And, and I think again, eighty-eight percent, that's phenomenal, direct classroom instruction. We're doing a lot with it. Thank you.
Um, Ms. Powell, and then Mr. Zingarino.
When I ran in twenty-twenty-two, the hot topic was CRT. I, after our council, they asked me, do you agree with CRT? I said, ma'am, sir, what is CRT? None of them were able to tell me what it was. I have heard about it, so I researched it. And when I researched it, it has nothing to do with what we teach, K twelve, nothing. That is a upper, it has to do with lawyers and all of these, the issues that they wanted to, um, find information on why certain things exist have nothing to do with what we teach. I taught thirty-seven years, and I was upset that no one told me to teach CRT, how to teach it. And then they have to worry about indoctrination. How are we indoctrinating the kids? If we could, we would indoctrinate them to do the homework. Sit down and listen. Ask questions when you're confused. Don't wait until we get to the end and say, I don't understand. We would indoctrinate them to do certain things.
Thank you, Mr. Ungar. Is that it, Tom?
So we've heard a lot of good things here, you're a mine, I say. We, we, um, I agree with Mr. Lee. Um, yeah, meritocracy, we need to have a plan for, we hear a lot of good statements being made here. We need to make people like professionals. Ultimately, the children are most important, and we've heard that here. The children are the most important. But, but when we hear things like we have to pay teachers like professionals, what, what does that mean? And what is a professional pay? There has to be a system of meritocracy. There has to be something in place that provides for proving what that teacher should earn. I heard the comment here, the CRT was never discussed. Although, like, you know, that one of the board members here when elected a few years ago was asked about color in the classroom, and the comment that was made that the color of students the classroom, and the comment that was made that the color of students is very important, and we all should be aware of that. Nobody should. We should be all one people. And when you introduce color, or anything else, you can never have a conversation about equality.
Thank you, Mr. Zingarino. Gentlemen on the left, nothing. Okay. We are going to have one more question. Let's hold it with you all. This is the fifth question, and the first answer will be taken by Mr. Lee and Mr. Seth. And that question is as follows. While none of Dorchester Two's schools are rated below average or unsatisfactory, there continue to be gaps in academic success that separate children based on their economic status or the color of their skin. What role do you see for the school board in seeing these gaps closed? Again, Mr. Lee is first, and Mr. Dick.
So I think the question is, what is the board's role in dealing with the socioeconomic impacts that drive, that impact student achievement? And the answer is, again, from an advocacy and a leadership and advisory perspective, we should be working with the community to point those things out and helping to drive attention from the community. One of the challenges we have in public education is we've tried to make our schools the be-all, the end-all for everything for every child. And as I said, I'm very candid. We need a clear, cold, sober view to recognize that cannot happen. We have to focus on the things we can do. There are programs like free lunch programs and things like that that are very tactical and just a form of making a lot of sense. But we also have tons of other programs in our social services systems that supposedly are there to try and help close those gaps before the children enter our schools. Why aren't they producing the results they should? So as far as I'm concerned, the school board's primary role is to advocate for that, but continue to push the focus to what the mission of the public schools should be, providing the education and the basic skills for our children, all children who are in our public schools.
Thank you. Mr. Davidson.
Yeah, we do have a problem in our schools. I think I read recently on our DD2 website that fifty-three percent of our families in our schools are in poverty levels. So that's a hurdle that you're always going to be dealing with. And, you know, you can only stretch a dollar so many ways. So I think we do, overall, a good job of providing things for children that don't necessarily get it at home. But it goes back to money. How can we generate more money? Because we're not all living in poverty level. And, you know, as a CPA, I have a lot of clients that I can see sponsoring teacher break rooms and buying teacher supplies, like Foundation's already done a good job of. There's something we could expand, we could excite the community, get them involved, and make sure nobody gets left behind. I think sometimes in the past, we've spent too much time trying to push a square into a circle. If a kid shows that he's mechanically inclined and enjoys doing that kind of stuff, and he doesn't enjoy schoolwork, don't push a square into a circle. Embrace that. So you can have so many great jobs that you can do that you will be inspired to do, we need to inspire children, we can inspire teachers. So as adults, we can't fix all the problems, but we certainly can improve, and that's it.
Thank you, sir. From District One, Mr. Unger, and then Mr. Farner. The question is, that while none of the Dorchester Two schools are rated below average or unsatisfactory, there continue to be gaps in academic success that separate children based on their economic status or the color of their skin. What role do you see for the school board in seeing these gaps closed?
Thank you. You're actually right. I was fifty-three. I'm shocked to know that statistic, that fifty-three percent are in poverty. And they definitely come from, they have definite disadvantage when it comes to schooling. A lot of times, don't have the parental support to do that. What can we do as a board? We can treat everybody the same, number one. What we offer, mentoring, and how, I like to see peers helping peers. A big brother, big sister program throughout our schools, since we pay our kids, that did perform very well, actually have them be his mentors to their peers. They junior seniors, parrot and freshman, okay? I think that could go a long way. My daughter was an example. She was taking geometry in eighth grade, and she had to do it remotely, because there's so few people in eighth grade. And she got about four different remote teachers throughout the course of the year. She ended up getting her hunger in geometry. You know why? Because of her big sister. She would go to her sister. So we need to, for those families that are disadvantaged, you need to go and get this student support, help them, help them teach their peers who have to do it. And so I think that would be a great way of doing it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I will tell you, when you look at Dorchester District Two, we've created our own problem. We continue to talk about growth. People continue to move to summer villages, Dorchester District Two, North Charleston, because Dorchester District Two, if you look at that real estate ad, it says DD2, right? So, and I say that because I'm very proud to look at that, that as a school district, we have always, always, always believed in the power of equitable resources across our entire school district. So it doesn't matter if I'm talking about Windsor Hill, all the way on the ocean, North Charleston, or if I'm talking about Knightsville, I'll go there, I'll sit here in Knightsville. It doesn't matter. Equitable resources for every single student in those schools, in those classrooms, right? Using our Title I funding wisely for those children that are in poverty. Those types of things, we have to continue to look at those pieces of the puzzle and understand that every single child, as long as we keep the mindset and we know in our hearts that every single child can, will, and has to have the opportunity, is there not even right to have an education, to have a world-class education? That's our goal. So as a board, we have to give equitable resources to our entire school district.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Zingarino, you're next, and then Ms. Powell.
I agree with a lot of what I've heard here. We shouldn't be looking at color, religion, nothing of that nature. Students should get an equal opportunity to succeed. However, teachers don't always know what the personal circumstances are in the household. That's why we have to have parents involved. That's why as a school member, it is incumbent, I believe, to go out and meet with parents and talk about what's going on, what are some of the struggles, so that we can help those students succeed. Because at the end of the day, the only thing that is important is that every student succeeds. It doesn't matter if they come from the richest family or from the poorest family. I don't look at that at all, and I don't think anybody should. We need to focus on the student. White and girl, and yes, boy and girl, and nothing else. What do you need, and we should be provided with. And we should be focusing on the basics, reading, writing, math, science, history, and we should be teaching civics. Children should learn about government, the government around them, and money management, how to balance assets and liabilities, and how to spend and save money.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Powell.
As I heard the question, my mind went back, so I'm going to have to be real. I'm the only person of color sitting on this board. I am also the person that technically would have been at an economical disadvantage. But my mother said to all three of her daughters, you will finish high school, and you will not just stop there, but you will go further. She set the expectation from day one. Number one, I better not have to come and go to that school because of your behavior. If I do, we're going to take care of business. Secondly, she never let us get the attitude, well, I can't do this, I can't do that because of the color of my skin. Her whole thing was simply this, you can do whatever it is that you want to do, but you got to work at it. If you are an A student in her house, you brought no A's. If you are a C student, you brought a C. And she was okay with that. So I, parents, again, that's why I'm hopping on parents. Because of my mother, I stand before you, all three of her children were in college at one time. All three of us are graduating. Her granddaughter has her doctors, et cetera. I'm saying that to say this, parents, you have a very important role. Stop believing that the school can solve everything. We can't. You may or may not openly, but guess what? I'm going to tell you the truth. Ten years from now, twenty years from now, we'd be in the same place and keep the same attitude.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments left or right? I see none here. Mr. Zingarino.
Eric, Zingarino, yes. I agree with Ms. Powell. She doesn't realize, though, that I am, I mean, I'm of color. My background is very diverse, and in my background is... Oh. I don't mean not that. And I like what she said about the fact that her mother drove her to succeed us. My parents did too. My parents did too. I grew up in a neighborhood where if you complained, you were voted. Of course, today we're talking about what we need to do in this center, right? It's not what you do, and we address it now. But I grew up in a neighborhood where you had to be tough. And so I can appreciate what she's saying, I understand what she's saying. But we have to be colored, white.
Thank you, sir.
Students are what's most important.
Very good. Yes.
Yes.
Just a little comment. I love your mother, I've met her, Matt. And I wish we could take that story, and every parent could hear that story at the start of the new school year. Because that's the kind of community involvement, parental involvement, we have.
Yeah, a little bit, just to touch on the things that others have mentioned. In mentoring today, I had a young man, Ray, he was coming out, and he said, he's kind of fallen behind in math. And I shared a story from college. I said, I would have passed calculus if I didn't have a math lab, where I could go and have someone show me how to do problems. And once someone showed me, then I understood them. And we have, we have plans in place right now. We have to motivate our parents. We have to find a way to get the connection, to have a motivational message to the parents, that you got to give them all back. The kid wants to go to after-school, pre-pri, but he didn't have a write-off. So I said, listen, you know, ask your parent. If they can't do it, if they can't find someone else, we're not allowed to talk to you as a mentor. Get your parent to reach out to us. One of us will get you off, if that's what it takes. And that's what we need to do as a community. No deal, I'm fine. I said, ask your teacher, see if they can help you in their lunch. If she, if they don't help you, ask the principal. Keep asking until you get what you need.
Thank you, sir. We're through the questions, all the questions that we have time for, and we'll now move to closing statements. And as I said at the outset, we will reverse the order of the opening statements, which means we'll begin with District Seven, and the people will vote first, followed by Mr. Dick.
I'm Jim Lee, running for the District Seven seat. I bring with me a neat combination of experience, as a parent, as a forty-year business professional, as a retired Air Force member, as a former elected school board member and adjunct college professor. Don't have time to tell you everything about me. I encourage you to go to my campaign website, jimlee@dd2.com. You can find more about my background, more about my thoughts on the various issues. You can contact and interact with me. And on November fifth, or whenever it is you choose to go to the polls, if you choose to vote early, I encourage you to vote for Jim Lee, the shortest name, the last name, and the last office on the District Seven ballot. Thank you.
Patrick Davidson again, patrickfordd2.com. I'm CPA, I grow up here, practicing about the committee. Spent my whole life helping, whole, the whole life helping children. And I'd like to have the opportunity to grow DD2 to what we think we need. I would love to have your vote. If you have any questions, please reach out to me. I think I have a plan in place to get our teachers where they need to be, to get students out from that we need. But it's a never-ending problem. It's going to be, you're never done, there's always more to do. So I'd like to be a part of that, if you guys have given the chance.
Mr. Zingarino.
Thank you to everyone who attended. I appreciate it, and I know everyone here appreciates it as well. Again, my name is Glenn Zingarino, I'm running for DD2, School Board, Seat Five. You couldn't hear everything that I would believe in and want to talk to you about, and so I think everyone here would say the same thing about the video they've been. I heard here on my Facebook page, I will tell you, and I'm very honest in saying this, this is not partisan election, and I am not putting campaign signs up, I am not sending flyers or mailers out, because in the next year, each year, we're inundated with so much stuff, you're not going to know what you're going to do. But the president, I'm now, flat out agreement, I'm carrying a word of mouth. Couple of things you didn't hear is that I believe in competition, and I believe in school choice. I believe that taxes should be diverted to the choice of the parents, and I believe that, and I have a plan for eliminating taxes, school taxes on seniors in a five-to-seven year period. Again, Glenn Zingarino, I'd be humbled to have your vote. If you don't want to vote for me, then this lovely lady here will be with you.
Thank you. I'm Cynthia Powell, running for Seat Five. I would greatly appreciate your vote. Along with everything else that we have already started to do on the board, one of my focuses will be parents. I will be calling you, I will be contacting you, I want you to get involved, because truly, your involvement will make the difference in your life and the lives of your children. We just need you to work with us, bring your ideas to us, so that we can work together. Thank you for all of you that came out. Cynthia Powell, Seat Five, I look all to your help and your board. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, I'm here, District One, Number One. I appreciate your vote. I want to say I'm working for you, dd2.com. You would love it. Something you may not have heard tonight, besides financial responsibility and design innovation, okay? So I want to get, my son, I want to do more classes for the trades. This economy is shifting great to a skills-based economy. Our schools have to stay ahead of that. A son who's taking well, and he's absolutely loving, and we need to do more. I have a whole ton of ideas about all different types of things, including student government, actually doing our government in school, with debate and all that. So lots of ideas I want to bring to the board, and I really appreciate your vote. And I thank you all very much for coming out here tonight. This shows a lot.
I just want to say, thank you again for taking the time to be here this evening. It means a lot, it means a lot to come out and learn what we're out to the candidates. It takes a lot, we all agree, it takes a lot to run for this office. I appreciate each and every one of you. I appreciate the exchange of ideas that we had tonight. I go back to my why. If you're going to click my name on that ballot, you have to understand why Justin Marsworth does what he does. It's really simple. Kids in our district, a life as an educator, I've got a local business right here in DD2. It's so, 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 so important to me. This district, what we stand for, our kids, it's all about our kids at the end of the day. I love, love, love Dorchester District Two. I love each of you for being here. Justin Marsworth, I would be humbled, I would be honored to have your vote in this election. Please find me on Facebook, and again, thank you. Have a very nice.
Well, thank you first to each of the candidates for being here, for your thoughtful responses and for your service to this community. Thank you to the audience, those who Thank you to the audience, those who choose to watch the video, that will be available for taking time to hear from the candidates. We encourage all voters to study the issues carefully, learn about the positions of each candidate, and vote for the candidate of your choice on November fifth. Early voting starts October twenty-first. Check your voter registration status and polling locations on scvotes.gov. Due to Hurricane Ali, the deadline for registering to vote in South Carolina has been extended to October fourteen. You can register to vote online at scvotes.gov, or at the lead voting voters, vote411.org. And candidate information and answers to questions for all the races can also be found on vote411.org. Finally, thank you again to our hosts and our co-sponsors organizing this forum today.
I guess we're not doing any signs or flares or anything else.